All right, welcome back. We are coming back or we're reconvening after recess from our 2:00 B.O.C.C. Board of County Commissioners meeting from this afternoon. And we're going to be opening up a public hearing. This is still February the 5th, 2019. It's now 5:00 P.M. I'm John Hutchings, Board of County Commissioner Chair. And to my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is going to be La Bonita Boomer, and she is the Clerk of the Board. And to her right is our County Manager, Ramiro Chavez. And to his right is Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager and Finance Director. Thank you all for being here. And this public hearing is considered -- is to consider proposed amendments to Section 16.04.110 of Thurston County Code relating to boating speed limits on Lake St. Clair. Thurston County Code, Chapter 1604, provides regulation and restriction on the use of county waters. Public Works staff recommend an amendment to Section 16.04.110 of Thurston County Code raising the lake water level elevation boating restriction threshold from 69.5 feet above sea level to 69.9 feet above sea level. The amendment would allow for increased recreational opportunity on Lake St. Clair and comes at the request of members of the public. There's a sign-up sheet in the back of the room that you can add your name to if you wish to testify. And I see that folks have signed in. Some have checked the box, yes, they do want to testify, and some said, no, they don't, or indicated. So I won't call on the folks that indicated they don't want to testify. But at the very end, if anybody chooses to change their mind, you can do so. You will have three minutes to testify. And I'll be calling out the names for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Adjust the mic for you so that people -- this is being livestreamed and recorded, so you'll be added to that historical document. And I'll also read the name of the next person on deck that will be coming up next. Our Clerk of the Board, La Bonita Boomer, will review the timer. Do you want to show them how that works? It'll go to three minutes. It counts down. At the end, it's a buzzard, or a bell, or a ding, something like that. And then your time is up. If you're mid-sentence, finish. They're not going to cut you off. But for public comment, here's the rules of the road. We welcome a comment from the public. You're here to testify to us. We're here to listen, and it's our time to listen to you folks. And so the Board does not respond to comment, and the County Manager may follow up on specific items if need be. Speakers are limited to three minutes to address the Board. Meeting attendees cannot donate your speaking time to another person. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. Please silence your cellphones. No comments that are lewd or offensive to a reasonable person. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion for a for-profit business. No comments that are inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory. All materials that you may provide to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. Remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board of Appeal are not allowed. Thank you for your cooperation, and please know, just in the essence of maintaining decorum and efficiency of time, when someone's done talking, we don't want a bunch of applauding or booing. We don't need that, the cheerleading, okay? Please, please. And with that, public hearings to consider proposed amendments to Section 16.04.110 of Thurston County Code related to boating speed limits on Lake St. Clair. I'm now opening up. The public hearing is now open. And I'm going to ask Tim Wilson to come up and give a -- he's a staff. Give him time to present on the background information proposal, written comments submitted for the public hearing, and any additional information requested by the Board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Wilson, Honor Resources Manager of Public Works. As mentioned, staff has forwarded for your consideration amendment to Section 1604.110 of Thurston County Code, which would raise the lake water level elevation -- the lake water level elevation boating restriction threshold from 69.5 feet above sea level to 69.9 feet above sea level. To give you some background here, Lake St. Clair is a kettle lake that is surrounded by approximately 500 structures. The history on this goes back quite some time. In 1999, 2000, there were requests from Lake St. Clair residents to reduce the speed limit due to high water levels. Between 2000 and 2012, there were nine different emergency resolutions that continued those boater speed restrictions. In 2013, Ordinance 14975 set 69.5 feet above sea level as the elevation in which those speed limits would be set. The ordinance that you are considering this afternoon is requested by some of the citizens of Lake St. Clair and would change the level at which boater restrictions are imposed from 69.5 to 69.9 feet. A couple of information points. According to previous work by CPED staff, there are approximately 14 structures that are at or below the current 69.5-foot mark. And at 70 feet, which is just above the threshold we are proposing, the number of affected structures rises from 14 to 18. Also, according to staff, the number of recreation days on Lake St. Clair when using 2012 through 2018 average elevation data would increase from roughly 60 days to roughly 120 days per year. With that, I would add there, we have received three public comments prior to the public hearing, all of which are opposed to the changes. Any questions?
Any questions?
Not at this time, thanks.
Questions? No, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
So at this time, is there another sheet in the back that's coming -- that'll come forward?
I'll get it.
Okay. At this time, we're opening up to public comment now. Again, I'll call your name. If you check the no box, I won't call your name, but I'll give you an opportunity at the end if you change your mind. And I'll invite the first person to come up and, for the record, state their name and address, and then I'll let you know who's next in the batter box. So the first one coming up is Shannon Hagan, followed by Clayton Kruger, I believe. And if I mispronounce your name, I'll take the responsibility rather than the handwriting.
Hi. Hello. My name is--
Can you go right to the microphone, pretty please?
Sorry, my name is Shannon Hagan. I was born on the lake. My father built that house on the lake in 1962. I don't know if you know this background, and please, if it's Captain Obvious, really, I'm sorry. I do want to tell you that there are 500 structures on Lake St. Clair, but the grand majority of those structures enjoy the privilege of a five-mile-an-hour speed limit all the time, no matter how high the lake is. Only one part of that lake in the South Basin is actually subject to the wave action and subject to the high water that we are concerned about today. And of those structures, of those -- they call them structures, but what they are is homes and the only, probably the biggest investment than any one of us really has. Of those structures, there are very few that actually have direct impact of the wave action from this recreation. It's people recreating. My home has problems with the floor. The floor is uneven and unstable. If you guys have not actually understand the history of Lake St. Clair, we're actually in a flood emergency, and we have been since 2005. The lake level has risen and risen and risen. So we have several stresses that our community is under. One, not everyone is actually negatively impacted by wave action. Two, we got a little reprieve in 2013, so that we were able to know, okay, at what level do we need to harden our backyards? We spent thousands and thousands of dollars to do that work. And again, we are unfortunately, the folks that are impacted most by this problem are faced with the very organized group of people with lots of resources that really just want to go and play with their boats. And so that is uncomfortable day to day because we are unable to have a Pierce County Sheriff out there all the time. A lot of times, folks push that speed limit. Either they say that they are unaware, or they just don't care. Going out on your front porch at any time of the day to address that is uncomfortable. And we are doing our level best to be good stewards, but I think that what we all have a problem with is flooding.
Talk to us, yeah, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. What we all have a problem with is flooding. We have historic flooding problems, but we do not all -- are not all equally affected by that. Just for the record, in the early 2000s, there was ordinance that our community faced about jet skis and the noise that people had according to that. Some folks were on -- didn't want jet skis on the lake. I was not a person that was opposed to that. I grew up with power sports. What I am opposed to is the fact that the final word is that the folks that are advocating for a higher lake level are advocating for your permission to destroy my property. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next up is Clayton Kruger, followed by Jonell Bozeman. How you doing, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you. My name is Clayton Kruger. I live at 4617 RecLaux Road. I also, like Shannon, have been a resident of Lake St. Clair my entire life. It is a really special lake in our community. Probably one of the neatest lakes in our state. The reason why it's such a special place is the diversity of what we can do on our lake. It's unlike any other lake in both the layout, the -- it's very scenic, and there's a lot of nature there. There's the opportunity to go slow, and there's always been the opportunity to go fast. Recreation is a huge part of what that lake has been. And I mean, I grew up learning how to water ski on that lake. I bought a home on that lake with the aspirations of teaching my children how to water ski as well. Three years ago, we had one week of summer where we could water ski because the lake dropped below 69.5 feet. The year after that, there was zero days. This year, the first day was August 20th. The 69.9 mark that was originally established in the year 2000 on the resolutions, I think the first resolution was Resolution 12133 in the year 2000. The county went out, due to public comment, and determined that 69.9 feet was the mark at which property damage on our lake could occur. They then wrote into the resolution that at 69.9 feet or May 1st, whichever came first, is when skiing would be allowed. So even if the water was still over 69.9 feet, there was still -- we could still go skiing starting May 1st. 12 years later, in 2012 is when a group of people came together and said they'd like to change that. A public hearing like this, which was very poorly informed to our community, was held, and the people that would like to see that rule changed were present, and their voices were heard. My request is that we take a look at the original data, who came up with the data for the 69.9-foot mark, because that was data that was based on work. The 69.5-foot number is based -- it's arbitrary. It's based on nothing. I have sympathy for Shannon and homeowners like her on the lake that -- whose homes and properties are affected. Her home is built out over the lake. No other homes are built out over the lake. That doesn't match code today. You can't build a home out over the lake. I would like to have a conversation with Shannon about what is she doing to -- the water's going to continue to rise. Whether or not there's waves on the lake or not, the lake's going to impact Shannon's property. So what is she doing to mitigate that for her home? And should her home affect how the rest of us get to use our lake? The 69.9-foot mark was made with intention. It was made with data. It was made by the county. The 69.5-foot mark was arbitrary. I'd appreciate if you consider changing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Jonell Bozeman, followed by Jake Hamilton.
I have my son as the one who wants to talk.
Okay. Did I pronounce her name properly?
Seth Bozeman.
Seth? Seth, you're going to have to crank that thing way down there, bud. There you go, sir.
I would like it if you would--
Oh, timeout. Say your name, and just like everybody else, and your address.
Seth Bozeman. 4914 Thompson Lane Southeast.
Good job, thank you.
So I would like it if you raised the level that we could go skiing on, because it'd be a lot of fun to go out and be able to ski more often and raft more often, and before we were able to do that a lot. And I just like the privilege of being able to go out on to our lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Brave young man. Thank you very much. Jake Hamilton, followed by -- now, this person didn't say yes or no, so I'll give you the opportunity. Virginia Meyerfield?
My name is Jake Hamilton. I live on 5007 RecLaux Road. I'm 25 years old, growing up on the lake my whole life. I've had the privilege of being able to participate in all the water sports everyone else here, most everyone else here loves to do. A lot less in the last few years than normal. And I find it alarming, actually, that some people on the lake would be against allowing for a longer season. It's not really an issue for me, being able to water ski or wakeboard more, is more thought that in the future, whenever I want to have children, are they going to even be allowed the opportunity at all? Because a lot of times, the way these go is you start making these rules to, you know, raise the level or lower the level at which we can ski, and eventually, you know, it just -- when is it going to get shut down all the way? And that's what I'm worried about. And, I mean, like Clayton said, you know, we had a year we didn't get to go at all. So I just worry about for the future and the kids in here today. I want them to be able to have the same experiences that I had. And selfishly, I would like to do it also, but more importantly, I think we have to think about the value of the experience of being able to participate in the water sports. And you've got to kind of weigh the two there. I mean, you're talking, what is more valuable, the experiences that you can have with your family and your friends, or property value? I understand some people are a lot more drastically affected, and I do feel for them. I also think it's hard to justify a few people's hardship to shut down a whole community's love for water sports and just the community itself. We have a great community on the lake. Everyone out there, and when they're out doing the water sports, it's, you know, everybody's waving to each other, having a great time. The past few years, there's been a lot higher tensions around the lake. You go out there, if we get it open, and you're water skiing, and you still have people yelling at you to slow down and stuff like that when it's legally open, because they're worried about, you know, their property, which is totally understandable. But I think raising that restriction up would be very beneficial to the community and to the future generations. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir. Next is Virginia, I believe Meyerfield, if I pronounced it properly, followed by Ted May. Did I get it right?
Yes. Murfield.
Murfield, okay. I didn't get it right.
Hi, my name is Virginia Murfield. I'm at 10211 Mullen Road, and I just have two things to say. When the water level is high during the winter and we have a very windy day, there is damage that occurs to those few properties that are at risk anyway. So it's not -- all the damage that is occurring to these houses is not purely because of boaters. I do want to make an exemption for the deep wave kind of boating, I'm not sure what they call it, but just regular slalom skiing, I think, should be allowed for a longer period of time during the summer. The second thing I want to say is, to the people whose properties are being damaged, I certainly feel very deeply that that's an unfortunate situation. However, changing the -- what the lake is used for and taking away that multi-use title also depreciates the value of all the other homes as well. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See, Ted May, followed by Jim or Jen or Wright. Nope, they said no. Let's move on down here. Followed by Barry Kruger.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, distinguished members of our lake, my family, I'm Ted May, 4902 Thompson Lane Southeast, Olympia, Washington. My family came to Lake St. Clair in 1927. I was there in, I like to say 1849, but it was 1949. I do believe that we need to raise this level so we can have some five-mile, over-five-mile-an-hour recreation on the one small area of the lake that we do that on. I don't believe that there's really all that proven of a lot of properties having problems, because on any shoreline in any body of water, due to many things, you have ecretion and secrition. The one house that is built over the lake, my dad and I, when we were fishing back in the years that it was built, we even stopped and told the builder they need to build it higher because it was built too low to start with. But neither here nor there. People need to look at ways to maybe do something about that. I don't know if FEMA would have anything involved or anything like that, but if we can't have some recreation in the summer months on the lake and go over five miles an hour, then I would say, look at all the rest of the freshwater lakes in Thurston County and do the same regulations with them, because they all have high water and shorelines, and the same premise would exist with them. Why is our lake the only one singled out? It isn't fair. So please raise the water level to 69.99, I believe is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Barry Kruger, followed by Robin, and I'm going to get it wrong, I'm sure, Kangary or Kinjery? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barry Kruger, 5132 Ramblewood Lane. And I've lived on the lake for 25 years plus. And this, it used to be a year-round ski lake, and that's what was so appealing to me. But I kind of went through something similar to this 20 years ago. I was on a Thurston County Lake Safety Task Force. There's always going to be a couple people on every lake that hate boaters. So they were trying to shut down, they weren't going to be happy to every lake in Thurston County that's five miles an hour. So I spent like a year and a half working with Judy Wilson, Diane Oberquell, Kevin O'Sullivan, and anyhow, so I kind of know what we're going through, but that wasn't a high-water issue. Now it's a high-water issue. I do feel sorry for a couple of houses, like Shannon's, that are at risk for high water. But then again, these houses were built 50, 60 years ago, before the county codes. It took me a year and a half to get a building permit where I'm at now, and I'm in the 100-foot setback zone from the lake, you know? And I'm sorry, this is what some people aren't going to like, but these houses that are in jeopardy aren't anywhere near up to county code standards to today. So, I don't know, I'd like to see the water level raised, you know? So our summers are short enough, as it is. So we all bought on the lake for recreation. I spend most of my time fishing on my party barge, but if I want to go skiing and pull kids on tubes, you know, that's why I bought here. And I don't think that we should have to sell our waterfront homes to go live on a different lake, because the reason that we bought here, we can't do it anymore. And that's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Robin, and then James Peterson.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Robin Kangary, and I live at 5020 Ramblewood Lane. So I'm probably not going to say anything else that anybody else hasn't said, but my biggest concern has always been, why is it the few squeaky wheels always get what they want? It appears somehow, when decisions are made that affect the majority, we have not really been informed. There's always been those few people that complain constantly and always seem to get what they want, when the majority of the lake wants over five miles an hour during the summer months. We have all purchased our property for our kids to enjoy. I raised my family there. They are now starting to have grandchildren. They want that opportunity for their children to be able to come enjoy the lake we invested in. Our whole life savings is in our homes, and for those few 18 people that might be affected, it's affecting all 500 of us who purposely went out to that lake to be able to enjoy all the aspects of water sports, not just water skiing, kayaking, fishing, all of it. But it feels like anymore on that lake, there's a few people that are controlling. I feel sorry for Shannon, but like Barry said, that house was not built to code. Who can build a house over the water? I think the time and energy should be spent trying to solve the problems for those 18, 20 homes that are being affected, instead of ruining the property value of the 500 people that actually live on the lake. And this time of our lives, children don't have a lot of positive things to do. Growing up on the lake, my kids were always there in front of my home. I knew where they were. I knew who their kids were, because they were enjoying the lake. We can't have that anymore. They don't want to come anymore. My son lives in Seattle. He wants to go to Seattle. He doesn't want to come back to Olympia anymore, because he cannot enjoy the summers like he used to. He grew up enjoying our lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And next is James Peterson, followed by Warren Murfield.
Hi, I'm James Peterson. I live at 4802 Thompson Lane Southeast. And I am definitely in favor of raising the lake level for the skiing and water sports. We've lived out there for about 12 years now, and we bought out there for the sole purpose of being able to recreate and just have fun with our families. I've raised my family out there. They've had a great time out there, water skiing and tubing and wakeboarding and whatever else we do out there, jet skiing. And it's, in the last three, four years, it's just been a real downer kind of living on that lake. You know, there's like, like has been said many times, we've got a few people controlling what's going on in that lake and the speed limit. I'm also in favor of moving it so that skiing starts at, in May 1, no matter what, no matter what the level is. It's the new normal. And so the new normal has to be adjusted to by whoever lives on that lake, and that's just kind of the way it is. I do feel bad for those people that, you know, have damage to their property, but it's, as we've said, it's, there's 18 structures that are going to get affected. I actually took my boat around at 69.5 and went as slow as I could, made as big of a wake as I could, as close to the shore as, you know, was legal. And there was very, very little water that I could make go over anybody's bulkhead at 69.5. And, you know, I was making a pretty good-sized wake, just, you know, purposely trying to get it over the bulkhead to sea. I actually took video of the whole thing. The other thing that people aren't thinking of when they want to lower the lake level is that our property values are all going to drop by $100,000 minimum. If you look at the difference between our lake and Patterson Lake at the value, Patterson Lake is at least $100,000, same house to same house, difference in property value. So we're taking 500 people and dropping everybody's value at $100,000. That's really not a fair thing to do for a few structures. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Warren Murfield on the way up. The next one I have on deck wants to testify. I left a phone number, no address, no last name, I don't think, and I'm going to bugger up the first name. I think it's the first name. It looks like it might be Riger, Roger, Rigor. I don't know if you know who you are, but you're next. All right. Mr. Murfield, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Warren Murfield from 10211 Mullen Road. I built my house there in 1990, 28 years ago, and have enjoyed water skiing on the lake. And I'm going to turn 70 this year, and I still enjoy slalom water skiing. And, you know, I built a home that I cannot build anywhere else, or can't reproduce, actually, because I bought it, built-- Built it with old growth redwood timber, and you just can't get that anymore. I plan on building to stay there. I now have six grandkids, 16, 15, 14, 13, and five. And I want to make memories for all of those kids. We did get a few weeks this year, and I've got some pictures that, you know, I can bring and show you if you'd like. I posted them on the Lake St. Clair website of the biggest smiles you'd ever like to see. And, you know, I want to continue to do that. I'm in favor of raising the limit, and also I think in favor of the previous gentleman's suggestion, May 1st. It should be this summer, you know? I don't know if, you know, 69.9 is going to do it. Like to be able to start, you know, as early as possible. Sometimes we get some really nice warm days in May now, and if we can take advantage of them, I would really like to do that. You know, if those few homes that are in trouble, you know, it's no different than a floodplain, you know? If they're in a floodplain, you know, you can't stop Mother Nature, so, you know, they need to do something to help their properties. I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Now, our mystery testifier. Oh, look at you. Come on up. Do you have to raise that microphone or lower it? There you go. And please, your name, first and last name, and your address?
So my name is Riker Olrich.
Riker?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good.
I live on 993867 Avenue, and I would just like to raise the level or the wake level because some boats, like they make more wake, and I get... You don't want those boats on our lake. But other boats, like pontoon boats, they don't make as much lake or wake, and so I think that you should raise it, and I just want to have fun in the summer, and sometimes, like, I don't want to start halfway through the summer because I don't get much time off school, so... Yeah. I would just like to raise it, and yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. And you want to know how cool your name is? I should have been able to read that because my grandson's name is Riker. Same spelling, yeah. Thank you, sir. Next, we have... Oh, now we go back to the circle again. Has there been any other signups? Do we know? Because some people signed in but chose not to testify or tick the box to...
I signed up with my name twice, but it was actually for him, for the second one.
Oh, don't tell me. Don't tell me. Kruger?
Yes.
Ah, got it. Okay. So come on up. Kruger, what's your first name?
No, okay.
What is it?
Sebastian.
Okay. Sebastian.
No more.
Hello. My name is Sebastian Kruger, and I'm nine years old. I've lived on this lake my whole life, and what I enjoy about this... Oh, sorry. I live on 4617 Recleau Road Southeast, and what I enjoy about living on this lake most is that you can go fast on our lake and waterski, and that helps you get exercise during the summer instead of just playing video games. And last year, August 20th, was the first day that you were able to waterski on our lake, and that's the day I learned to waterski. And there's a bunch of people out here on our lake that haven't learned to waterski yet, and I feel like they should get the opportunity to waterski or learn how this year. So please may you consider raising the level that we can... Raising the water level that we can waterski at so that we can ski early in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. I just want to applaud any youth that has been testifying because it takes a tremendous amount of courage to do that. So thank you for that. I'm going to go backwards. No other signups? Okay. And is there anybody that didn't sign up or did sign up that would like to testify? Come to the podium? Yes, sir.
I did sign up for...
Okay.
Hi. My name is Randy.
Oh, no, no. Raise it up. Don't bend over.
I don't do this very much. Hi. My name is Randy Webster.
You're brave, too. It's okay.
Yeah. I live at 4102 Thornton Road Southeast. My wife and I built a home out on Lake St. Clair about 14 years ago. Well, she's not here tonight, but anyways, we specifically picked Lake St. Clair for water sports. Built a nice home, love living there. I can look throughout this room and see people that I know, and it's really from the lake and waterskiing. The last four years, we really haven't gone up much. To be honest, we've been skiing in other lakes up north just because of the issue. It's kind of a tough pill to swallow when we're spending a lot on tax money. Our property value went up a tremendous amount. We pay a lot in property taxes, so it's kind of a hard one to do, but I do feel for some of the homes that have their properties are in danger, I guess, is the way that some of them feel. I do feel for you. With that said, I truly love waterskiing. When we are waterskiing, a lot of us, we're aware of that. We definitely stay within the middle.
Address us, though. Okay. Not the audience. Thanks, sir.
We definitely try to stay within the middle of the lake for that reason, so the wakes do dissipate. So there are ways. Avid waterskiers, we realize that we know if we're in the center, it definitely keeps the wakes from going too big. We have seen people in the past that I know they're upset about that go close to the edges. People that waterski a lot, we'll take them to the side and explain to them the reasons why. Definitely, I can understand the wake surfing being an issue. I do love wake surfing. We stopped wake surfing on the lake for that reason, using it just for waterskiing, wakeboarding with smaller wakes. So there are members of the community that love waterskiing, have tried to mitigate when we can the wake sizes. But for us, for me, my daughter's here tonight, it's really hard. It's... We love, absolutely love, to be able to come home from work, take her waterskiing, bring her friends out. There's a whole group of kids, I won't point to them, but there's a whole group of kids that I've taken personally waterskiing. One of the kids that testified tonight, I actually tried to teach him how to barefoot waterski at the age of, I'm guessing, seven or eight. So, I mean, there's a lot of good memories. Teaching kids to be active today is really important to me, I'm sure a lot of other members in the community. So the more we take away these things, the less opportunities we have for kids to continue to be active. And to me, it's just really important, living a healthy lifestyle, and so please consider raising it so we can continue to waterski on the lake. And if there's other things that we can do as a community to work towards those properties in question, we're, you know, as a community, we're here. So anyways, thank you for letting me share tonight.
Don't leave. Will you please give us your first and last name a second time?
Yeah. Randy, R-A-N-D-Y, Webster, W-E-B-S-T-E-R.
Good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, there's a number of folks that signed up and either didn't tick yes or no or tick no, and maybe they do want to testify. Anybody want to commit? These guys aren't that intimidating. They don't want to come up and talk and testify on this event. Please. Yes.
Hi. My name is Daisy, and I live on 103...
What's your last name, Daisy?
Daisy Ogul.
Thank you.
I live on 10311 Wildwood Lane Southeast, and I would like to make the lake level higher because I've only learned how to ski once by Randy, and I would love to keep learning, and me and my friend have many plans for this summer, but we might not be able to do them because they involve water sports like skiing and tubing. So we might not be able to do these water sports only if we get to make the lake level higher, and my mom's been skiing her whole life, and we would love to just keep doing what we love.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone? Anyone? All right. I knew one would come up. I knew it.
Hi. My name is Bryce Peterson. I live on 4802 Thompson Lane Southeast. I am most definitely in favor of raising the lake level to 69.9 because this is, as my dad stated, the level's just going to get higher from here. It doesn't look like it's going to drop. It's kind of the new normal, and I'd really like to be able to use the lake that we've invested so much money into, on our property, I should say. It's been a real downer not being able to use the lake the last couple of years because as an avid waterskier and jet skier, that's what I like to do, and when we can't do that, it's kind of terrible. So that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you very much. And I thank everybody, each of you that not only came tonight but also that decided and chose to testify. Thank you very much for that. We thank you very much. It's valuable input for us as we go through a discernment process. And so now, we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close tonight's public hearing. Oh, not Mike. Yeah? Mike. Did you get it?
Yep. Second motion.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This hearing closed. Now, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm ready to make a motion to lower the lake or to...
To lower the lake?
No, to raise the level.
There was some written comments that I was receiving just minutes before the hearing, some of which had a lot of stuff attached to it, and I would appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion about that material in light of all the information we got tonight. It would be my preference.
Okay. And that's okay with me. I mean, I don't get to choose, but I have input as well, and I'd like to see those comments as well.
I'd like to ask the county manager when we might discuss it.
Thank you, yeah. That's next with the game plan.
Yeah. So the next steps will be, if you choose not to take a formal action tonight, excuse me, will be, I will schedule a follow-up briefing with Tim Wilson in the next two weeks, and we'll have to see the schedule when that will be the best available time on your schedule. And then you will have the opportunity to revisit all the public testimony you received, not just verbally tonight, but as well as the written testimony, as Commissioner or Minister mentioned. And at that point, I will ask what would be the pleasure of the commissioners to the next steps. So please be aware of the schedule, and I will coordinate with Tim as to when we narrow down on the specific date, and he may be sending an email to the interested parties.
Okay. Is that how they're notified? Is it by email?
Yeah.
And we have a pretty thick packet of comments that we've received already, and I don't know what the number is, but it's considerable.
You received three comments. One, the you referring to, one particular comment had a PowerPoint presentation that it was pretty fixative.
That's what it was, with the pictures. Got it. Okay. Perfect. So it'll be a couple of weeks then? Yes?
I guess I'd like to let the audience know that this is not uncommon, that we would take into discussion what we've heard here tonight and any other information that we've had. Very seldom have we taken action immediately after a hearing, and in this case, where we have a commissioner that would like to review that, I think that's only the politest way[1745.86]